Y'all ready? Robby, y'all ready?
I tested.
It's gonna take a lot of time.
That's when you go, "Okay, God, step it again. Be patient. Help me to be calm." Hey Bruce, how are you tonight? You just have to, and then breathe, and then breathe, just gotta go.
Dwayne, y'all ready? Dalton?
Is that time already?
Dalton, y'all ready? Donna, you ready? Y'all ready?
You betcha.
Okay, I don't like to do that, but anyway, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, please. And we're gonna start off with, as usual, our invocation. See, Jeremy is here to lead us, so if you'll please rise.
Let's thank God for this beautiful day. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this time that we have together as community. Lord, that we live in a wonderful country where we are safe to do that, to do the business of community. Lord, to govern ourselves and to do what's best in this community's interest. And I pray, Father, you would just always give us wisdom and discernment, and you would give the city council wisdom and discernment, and knowing how to make this place an even better place to live and to recreate and to raise kids and to grow old and to just be a wonderful, wonderful community. Father, I pray that you continue to be with all those men and women who serve this country, both here and abroad. I pray that you put a hedge protection around them, that you bless them, and that you watch over their families as their way, Father. Father, we pray for those who serve this community here, for our police department, our fire department, our emergency responders, for our utilities and maintenance department, Lord, for all those who, Lord, go where each and every day to make this the wonderful place that it is. Father, we thank you again for this beautiful day, and we thank you most of all, and we pray your son Jesus. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag, and then turn me around here. Sorry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You protect the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Jeremy, thank you very much. Always appreciate that. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm under an absence here. I'm gonna start off with, I'm gonna make my usual statement about teachers, okay? Citizens who wish to address the council, and there's not many of you tonight, on any matter that may sign up to do so. So if somebody wants to address the council on anything that's either on the agenda or not on the agenda, you can still sign up. You have the opportunity to do that, and you have, you can speak for three, up to three minutes. If it's not on the agenda, we cannot respond. So you can make the statement, but by law, we cannot respond if it's not on our agenda. Okay? Okay, with that being said, I've got a proclamation here for somebody. Tom Edwards, would you and your beautiful other half, family up there?
I will. I would rather she were.
I'd really get my brother Hector's half, but yeah, I'm supposed to do that. If anybody doesn't know that Tom Edwards was our president of our EDC for eleven years?
Well, ten and a half.
Ten and a half, okay.
But he's counting.
And did a pretty good job, and basically responsible for our-
You're off script.
Well, I'm gonna really get off script when I read this, okay? Yeah, I've never been off script. But Thomas is basically for Clapas Park over here next door. He spearheaded a Parks and Wildlife grant, allowed us to do this over here, which, if anybody, I know y'all seen it, it's been readily utilized by a lot of people, including the deer. And we really appreciate it, so, and appreciation for that. And I'm not gonna read this per se, because I've done that to you.
I think you should read it slow and project the back of the room.
Slow enough?
Thank you very much.
There's a lot of whereas, so I'm gonna bypass most of the whereas, but basically, he was one of the founders of Morgan's Point Resort Economic Development Corporation. We started in 2011, so that makes it pretty good a while back. And served on the, as board president for several like years. He was the president we knew at the time he resigned. Oh, they make him hold? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So, in appreciation for all that both of you have done, and you letting him do that and getting him out of bed every Thursday, as we come to the meeting, we certainly appreciate that. So, I'm gonna skip down to here. Is that slow enough? So, I-
You're the mayor.
Okay. Now, therefore, therefore, I, Dennis Green, mayor, and the city council members over here, the city of Morgan's Point Resort, Texas, express our sincere appreciation and thanks as well as for that of our citizens, to Thomas Edwards for his distinguished service to our community. And in recognition, we do buy, affix my signature to this, and your sign, and so we hope you hang it in, we'd like to hang it on your swing, but-
Does this mean you're renaming Morgan's Point Boulevard?
No.
No, it's not. It is free, okay? Do you want us to do that Boulevard? Would you like to talk about the Boulevard? How about color?
Tom and Daryl.
There you go, there you go.
We did all of this, we did this three weeks ago when there was a dedication for a swing in the new park, so it's not used to it, but we kinda dropped the gun.
Better job.
Oh, did I? Appreciate it. Thank y'all. Okay, now, for citizens' comments. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you gonna be the first one?
Three minutes, and go. I just wanted to update the council and the citizens on Summerfest. There's not been a whole lot publicized yet, and that's for a particular reason, because we wanna make sure we get all the right information out. So there will be more information coming out next week. We had a meeting Friday with the key players initially to work on an emergency action plan, so both chiefesses were there. BJ was there. Linda was there, I was there, of course Dalton was there. So, progress is being made. We are moving along, so like I said, within the next week or so, we're gonna have some very specific information coming out on Summerfest. For those who don't know, it's the city party celebrating the 3rd of July, which is taking place on the 3rd of July, starting at 3:00 PM and running through probably about 9:30 with fireworks taking place across the lake. That's really about it. I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that we were still moving forward with that process, and things are changing. We made some decisions Friday in the meeting, and we've had three items already changed over the weekend that we talked about and adjusted stuff, that's why there's not a lot of info out. So, more info to follow.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See you in a little while.
He'll be back.
I'm gonna do this under citizens' comments. Lynn Mylon, who runs our, who heads our police auxiliary, they are auctioning off a quilt. There are rapid tickets available. They're $10 a ticket, $3 for 20 if I remember correctly. Lynn's not here tonight, but it's a homemade quilt, really neat, and they're only selling 500? I think 500 tickets. So, even though she's not here tonight, tickets are available and to the police association or to City Hall. So anyway, it's a good, it's all the money donated to the department. Money stays here, and it's a beautiful quilt, made by one of our residents. Okay, enough on that. First thing, on the consent agenda, on the minutes, do I hear a motion? Anybody who's looking at the minutes?
Yeah, there is one correction on a date that I gave Ophelia, and with that correction-
I think it's been changed already in front of Easter?
Yes.
Yep.
And with that, I'm sure the consent agenda be approved.
A second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Notice that it's all approved.
Jim, you're up early.
I am. How are y'all this afternoon? In substitution for Nathan, he's at a wedding for his children. So I believe it's in Colorado or some other place. He's probably getting some cooler weather than this. Just a report of what we had at our last meeting, the planning and zoning met on April 26th. During that meeting, we discussed the following items. Number one, planning and zoning completed an interview of an applicant for our planning and zoning committee. We lost one member, so we've had a couple of volunteers that have come forward. Application was from Roxanne Stryker. She's one of two applicants to fill a current vacancy on the planning and zoning committee. And after further discussion, a motion was made and seconded to recommend Roxanne for consideration by city council. The vote was unanimous in favor. Item number two is planning and zoning further discussed and increasing the committee membership. Reason we discussed that is, from time to time, we have gotten where we get real close to not having a quorum. So, we discussed it with Dalton quite a bit, and we felt like it was appropriate that we might add an additional slot for the planning and zoning committee. With that, a motion was made and seconded to recommend adding Thomas Westmoreland to the committee. Thomas had filled an application before, and we, whenever we came back around with Roxanne's application, we had two, and we felt like it was a great opportunity to add that to our committee numbers at that point. We did vote on that, and everybody voted unanimously to move that forward for city council's consideration. Item number three is a variance request for 9 North Compass, which was tabled back at our March 23rd meeting due to the fact that the residents were out of town. They attended our April 26th meeting, and the committee had a lengthy discussion of the timing and need for the variance. Residents were issued a citation for, due to the fact that they exceeded one of our ordinance requirements of guideline of 5% on a kind of an outbuilding for the dimensions based on the size of your property. They paid the citation and came back to planning and zoning requesting a variance for the excess 70 square feet. A motion was made and seconded to move the variance request forward for city council consideration, and that was the vote, and this is what in favor. An item that was not included on the city council meeting on April the 12th was for certain issues regarding 18 Dangerfield. In the packet, I think that you, or that was there at that point, there were three issues that were listed. Number one was an accessory building. All issues were resolved regarding the permitting. No action was needed here. Second item was drainage, and in that case, the planning and zoning is really not qualified nor has the resources to state if the drainage is or is not effective for the proposed changes, so no action was taken on that item as well. The final item, letter C, was for the pavers. And regarding the pavers, a motion was made to recommend and move forward to city council for their consideration a utility easement variance to allow stone pavers to be placed three and a half feet from the residence property line. The vote on that was unanimous in favor. And the fourth item being no further business, planning and zoning adjourned.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the council members?
There's one correction on there, just from some of the confusion on that. It's three foot from the property line, requesting a variance to encroach four and a half feet into the utilities.
Okay, thanks Dalton. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Anything else? I'll be done.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay, going forward. Let's go to item, item number three. That's a variance request on 18 Dangerfield. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Can we, can we get a little bit?
Well, we'll discuss it if we accept it. We have to accept the-
Well, you, I, I can call for discussion. I can call for discussion on it.
Well, we're gonna have a discussion on it, but we need to accept it. It's on the agenda.
I'm gonna move to accept it.
In a second. I'm not saying yea or nay, we're approving it. We're just opening it up for discussion now, is what we're doing. Okay, Donna, was it seconded?
I second it.
In a second.
Okay, I just, I just wanted, I know Jay, our code enforcement officer, is here, and I thought maybe he could just give us a little briefing, because it's kind of pretty confusing, you know, with all the papers and HOAs and all that kinda stuff, so I just thought maybe he could briefly let us know about it.
So, where we're at right now, is they built a slab. There's a slab there for an accessory building. From the slab, they've added flatwork, pavers, rock, and those pavers, that rock goes six inches, not even a foot, from the property line inside and rear. All this came up because of concerns of flooding, which I know we're not discussing that. So, if you look at our ordinances on accessory buildings, there's a statement in there saying that accessory building can be three feet from the property line. I'm considering this, this flatwork coming off the slab of the accessory building as an extension of the accessory building, and asking them, requiring them, if you will, to come three feet off the property line, which I think that would put them in code as far as the slab, if you will, goes, since I call it an extension. And also, the drainage, I'm going back to that, I think it would help, if that was a legitimate concern by other neighbors.
So, this what they're asking the variance for?
Yes.
So, if there was no utility easement, so there's a seven and a half foot utility easement there on the rear property line, if there was no rear utility easement, and they came three feet off the property line, this wouldn't even be a topic of discussion. So, the variances for encroachment of four and a half feet into the utility easement, which would then give it a setback of our ordinances of three foot from the rear property line, in line with the rest of our licenses.
What kinds of utility? Are we talking about power lines?
On their survey, it actually defines it.
It's underground utility?
It just says utility easement.
Yeah, so on, on the survey itself, so-
It could be an aerial?
It could, yeah, it could be anything. So, you know, like, like on, on our survey, if there's an actual easement, whether that is for city, for power, or for anything, it'll have defined on the survey itself, utility easement.
Are they gonna accept the responsibility when they use a utility easement for destroying what they put there?
I'm sorry.
In other words, the utility easement is there for a reason. Now, if they encroach inside that utility easement, the power people or whoever it belongs to comes in and destroys the flatwork. Are they going to-
That's what discussed, and the sale. If we have to, the utility company, if anybody has to remove that for emergency response at any time, we are not putting that back.
So, city's not gonna be responsible?
Right.
Okay.
It's just like, it's just like the utility easement allowing kind of the hardscape, softscape, you know, along the right of way. Same concept, if BJ rolls over the petunias, we're not fixing their petunias. Same, same kinda concept on it.
Jay, you're okay with it? And the flooding zoning was okay with it? Did it pass there?
I have one other, I have one other question, yes. Is this utility easement, I mean, most of our easements in the city greenways are, it's not people's personal property, it's city property. Is this on their actual property lines? It is. So it's within their property lines, which to me is very important. You know, it's not really extending out an easement.
My understanding is that flatwork can encroach into a utility easement, and it's with the understanding that if every utility company has to come in, they're gonna take out whatever they want to, and it's your responsibility to fix it. My concern would have been, really more than anything, was the five foot, the drainage easement, you know, because if they're inside that drainage easement, then that could, that could have been a problem for impeding water flowing through there. So, utility easement aside, I guess I'm more concerned about the drainage easement being, it's dedicated here at five feet on both sides, so we're allowing them to build, to build the building? Is the building inside the five foot? DE?
No, the building is-
Okay, so the only thing that encroaches any easement is the flatwork of the pavers.
Pavers, yeah.
So, they're within, I think they're fine with it. They just understand that if they have to come in and dig it up, it's their responsibility to fix it.
Well, those pavers are, are they, you know, you go to Lowe's and buy these 12 by 12 squares? Is that what they are, or are they?
Rock.
Or just regular rock, or?
Yeah, and so- Okay, okay. Yeah, so one of the things-
So even if they flood, if the water will wash?
Yeah, one of the things we're gonna bring to P&amp;Z is kind of the definition of paver, so we're not diving into the weeds of, alright, is it mortar, is it sand, is it silica? No, we don't care. If they're connected and there's not natural earth, so we're gonna bring that to P&amp;Z for them to kinda open up for discussion. But because of the way the layout is, and it is all interconnected, we considered it impervious cover.
So Jay, is he okay with it?
Yeah.
The only question I had is, I'm assuming this picture that's in here is actually of the sandstone, or the limestone? My understanding is there was sand in between them? This actually looks like, like concrete, or like mortar.
If it's not mortar, you can put your finger in it.
And, and-
Again, it wouldn't matter.
And, and to that point, that's exactly kinda why we're like, look, if you, if it's interconnected, we don't care what is in between it. If it looks like there's mortar or concrete, it's considered, you know, at least mortar and concrete. That's why Jay looked at it as an extension of. So we considered it, just like if you put a thousand-foot concrete pad in a 500-square-foot building, we're gonna consider the thousand-foot concrete pad, and pavers were in the same boat as that, so.
Well, yeah, concrete, sure.
Any further questions? Donna, any? Anything? Sean, anybody? Okay, there's been a motion made and the seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Congratulations, got key variance. Okay, next one is item number four, another variance on 9 North Compass. Need a motion to accept that one?
A motion to accept it.
In a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's open for discussion. No, can, are you familiar with this one, Dalton?
This one was-
This is on the, this is on the, of the building, right?
Yeah, this one started before my time, but then it, it extended into, into when I was here. This was during the accessory building piece, where it went from 2% to discussions of 20%, and then finally, you know, council and P&amp;Z settled on 5%. Really, this kinda started as he had, you know, they had made attempts to come to P&amp;Z numerous times. Jade knows a little bit more of the backstory on kind of how it kinda came in. Long story short, they put up a building that was about 40 or so square foot, give or take, more than the 5% of their, of their-
Allowance?
That one, that's, yeah, that's the word. I'll go with that one. Allowance, and that's kinda where we're at. So the variances, the, the property for the 5%, their current building that's up right now exceeds that by about 5 square foot.
Good, this one also backs up to utility easement, also the-
Yeah, this, yeah.
Not questioning, but it backs up to it, correct?
Yes, yes.
So there's room behind it, that's what the utility easement's, there's room behind the building with the utility easement back there. If the easements were there-
And they had modified their illustration at one point in the permitting process to come out of it.
This was approved by the flooding zoning also? Jay, you good, you good with it?
I'm good with it. A lot of times gone by.
Yeah, it's been here for, what, a year now? I think we've been, just been on our table? Or start, well, it's been on, on the table for a year, not necessarily for us.
Not on our table.
Not on our table, you know.
I just had, I just had one question. Was the building erected during, because there was a period, it was 2%, and so they were denied, and then we, the council raised it to 5%. So was the building done after the 5%?
It was.
After the 5%, and even after the 5%, they, they were very patient. They were trying to get a variance even after that, and investment had already been made. I guess out of frustration, you know, and the can being kicked down the road is the way it's been put a million times, they, they went ahead and built the building. We issued a citation, but even after that, they've continued to try to get a variance, because, you know, they simply need to protect their property, which is a travel record.
Yeah, and, and Steph and I are working on, one, how to make sure we set the precedents, or not set the precedents, you know, in a negative way. So we are pulling out some tools in the toolbox that we're gonna start presenting to council and P&amp;Z, you know, to figure out how we can best, you know, again, mitigate these self-induced hardships that, you know, are happening. They're not happening as much as they were, but it's something that we are looking at, so.
But this is not a concrete slab, right?
No, this is just, just a carport over, over the driveway.
Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve? All approved?
Don't make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, got that done. Congratulations, both of you.
They said about time.
Okay. Since Mr. Edwards resigned, he's created turmoil in the EDC department, so we've had people resign and re-associate and everything else, so I need to have somebody accept the resolution number 2022.09, and that's the appointments of EDC members. May I hear?
I'll move, I'll move for the appointment of Scotten and Linda to the EDC board.
I'll second.
Seconded, okay. And Donna, in relation to that, I'm gonna read a little something here, okay?
Okay.
In doing that, Scott Fornair and Linda Bridges have expressed desire to join the EDC, the Development Corporation. So, we are asking them to be approved, or Scott and to Linda, and also, we accept the resignation to Jeff Davidson and Diana Delaney, who were the original members, or prior members, and because of business conflict, have resigned. So, that's, Linda and Scott are taking those two places. So we have accepting the resignation of two and the appointment of the other two. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the appointments?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Congratulations.
And thank you for serving. Thanks for serving.
Item number six was my fault. I put it on there, and I was thinking that we were, the EDC was gonna not meet for another two and a half months. It's gonna meet in May 19th, so I'm asking that we scratch this right now until after the EDC Corporation meets on May the 19th, and we'll discuss it after that time, if that's okay. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not gonna bring it up, so we're gonna postpone that one. Okay, now go back to planning and zoning now. Resolution 2022.08, and this is the one that Ken had just mentioned about filling your current vacancy at planning and zoning. Do I hear, somebody accept the resolution?
I'll accept resolution 2022.08.
Second, Roxanne Stryker.
I'll second.
And Larry, second. Okay, on that one right there. Ken, you wanna, wanna say it, or you want me to give the?
I don't have anything, so I'll-
Okay. Well, I'll be, continue what you said. Mr. and Ms. Westmoreland, would you please stand up?
This one will be Roxanne Stryker.
Do it.
This is Roxanne.
Roxanne Stryker.
We've got, we've got another one for you.
Oh, another few, okay, okay.
I don't think Roxanne is here. She's usually here at council meetings, but I don't, I don't see her out there.
I'm sorry, I missed that one. I apologize for that. Then how did I get two?
We'll make him stand in a few minutes. He's, he's down there too.
Number seven.
Yeah, okay, I moved the wrong slot there. Okay. Okay, this is to fulfill another one that was prior to vacancy in planning and zoning. Okay, this is to fulfill another one that was prior to vacancy in planning and zoning. And Roxanne Striker has agreed to serve, and they would love to have her on the board. So this resolution here would be to replace the vacancy in planning and zoning, the current one, which is 2022.08, with Roxanne Striker. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, that passes. Thank you. Okay. Okay, resolution, okay, item number eight. Resolution 2022.10, additional members. This is what Ken was mentioning to us a few moments ago, about lacking a few more people. Uh, having a little shortage of members. So this is asking to allow them to have two more members on the planning and zoning, which I think is a good idea. The more people, the more ideas, and, and, and the more people show up, hopefully, you get a quorum.
I move for the adoption of resolution, uh, 2022-10.
I'll second it.
Okay, Donna make the motion, and Sean second it. Any discussion on that, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number nine. Now we're getting run to you, Tommy. Yeah, I'll ask you to stand up one more time. This is what Phil, one of the vacancies in planning and zoning right there, Mr. and Ms. Westmoreland. So he's agreed to serve, and they've agreed to accept him. And we're glad to have him, he's my neighbor by the fact, but we can't hold that against him.
No, we can't.
Yeah. In lieu of that, uh, he's, he's not a bad guy. So I'm not gonna read the resolution, but he is, uh, the resolution is to appoint him as a member of the planning and zoning. Do, uh, any discussion?
No.
Has been, uh, motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, sir, thanks for serving. Ken, thank you for serving too, we always, always appreciate that. Sometimes we skip over you, apologize for that.
Hey, did we make a motion? I make a motion, we accept 22.
Oh, did?
22-10.
Oh, okay. I thought Donna did, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Sean did, okay.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, Sean, I didn't mean to overlook you on that one right there.
No, no, we just didn't do it.
Oh, we didn't do it?
Yeah, no.
Okay, and that one, and that 22-10?
Yeah.
Okay. On additional members? On the additional member, okay. Sorry about that.
We did the additional members. I made the motion, Sean seconded. He's saying for Mr. Wes Moreland there, he didn't get his first and second yet, so, and we just did that.
Oh, okay.
Now we just need to vote, we're good, right?
And we already voted. He said yes.
Yeah, we all said yes, that's right.
He just didn't make a motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, folks, sometimes I get a little confused.
It's okay, it's a long agenda, you're doing good.
Okay, well, item number 10, Disc Course Presentation for Anse Park.
Supposed to be Disc Golf Course, but. Yeah, so, and also too, my apologies, there was supposed to be a PowerPoint in here, there was some commu- miscommunication on my end. So this is the layout from the PowerPoint. Uh, Josh Porzma has the actual presentation, pretty much down to memory. We will send that to you as well, but he's gonna talk about pretty much what was in that PowerPoint.
Okay. Just on Disc Golf Course at Anse Park. So, here we go.
Everyone good? Alright, so, it's gonna be, or proposed name is the Resort Disc Golf Course. The reasoning for the course is disc golf is a fast-growing sport that anyone, any age, any size, big or small, can play. Uh, it will bring more citizens to Anse Park. Uh, as of right now, there's not too much that you can really do at Anse, and not a lot of stuff is utilized out there. Uh, it exposes the city in part to a more diverse group of people, to bring people from outside of the city that would come into the city and see what the city has to offer. It'll promote outdoor activity and get people a new challenge, and even a little bit of competition if they desire that. Uh, there's a large backing to have a new course built in the area. I have brought my buddy Alex, he's someone that we play with, and he's come to support. And then, uh, there's a lot of homes I've seen in the city that have baskets in their yard, and that's all I can do is have a basket in the yard, because there's, I mean, there's courses in Temple, but there's nothing that's really close to home like there would be at Anse Park. Another motivating factor would have to be the overall health and morale booster of people that work in the city, because half the police department plays disc golf, I got them into it, and shoot, seeing Hodge, it got both of them into it. So over half the department actually plays, and then we could welcome other people, even try to get Taryn to come in and.
We're too busy at the park, though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They got too much stuff going on.
That's a good one.
Building the course or promote a more active lifestyle and give the, give the city and the group something to work together as a team, and it's, you can do a team sport, or you can do it singles. Um, the design, the design was put together with a 2016 Anse Park master plan in mind. The, the design leaves plenty of room for other improvements down the road. The focus of the design is stay towards the outside and the least crowded parts of the park, to have the main insides and the baseball field be open for anything that you want to utilize it for. Um, it was brought to my attention about, uh, barbecue cook-off and the chili cook-off and all that down the road. There should be no conflict adventures. This is more of a, a family-friendly thing, not a competitive circuit kind of thing. So there'd be no issue to close down the course and have people park, and the baskets take up probably three feet of space wide. And then whether we have concrete tee pads or whatever tee pads we have, you can park on top of them, or over the top of them, anything that you'd like to do. And, uh, the way it's designed, it would maximize the flow of the park. Everyone would be walking in a circle all the way back to the parking lot. The labor for the park would be, can be done two ways. The first being, city uses maintenance department's manpower and equipment to dig the nine, basically the nine holes in the ground, or help pour the tee pads. The other being that the city uses none of its resources, it would be strictly volunteer work. Like, example, buddy Alex has helped, uh, brought to my attention that we can use outside work. He knows people, and we have a lot of people that would be interested in doing strictly volunteer work to get the course done as soon as possible. The course realistically take about two weeks to fully complete. It's a very simple design, and with or without the city's manpower, uh, it can be done in that same amount of time, maybe even faster with the maintenance department. It's a very, like I said, it's a very simple sport and simple layout that I have designed. When it comes to the cost, um, I have a fellow person that plays disc golf. Uh, he sponsored our Prodigy Disc Golf. He's already contacted his company to supply nine baskets for the course at a discounted rate. The total amount of the, cheaper of the two baskets designs would be $31.95. Uh, that's including shipping. Uh, cost continued. There's also a better basket option, which, it's higher quality, lasts longer, and everyone would prefer that over the first basket. The total cost of that basket would be $38.25. For the construction of the tee boxes, it'd be an additional estimated cost of 600, give or take maybe more, uh, depending on how advanced we want to take, uh, development of like the tee pads and everything like that. Uh, proposed size of the tee box would be five by eight feet, uh, not too big, not too small, just enough for how long the tees are and how much space you'd actually need to throw on the course. And in the, in total, the cheaper total cost for everything included would be $3,800, and the higher-end cost for the better baskets would be $44.25. In conclusion, the, the Resort Disc Golf Course is a simple, cost-effective way to bring life to Anse Park and bring exercise and enjoyment to the city. Hundreds of people play this sport in the area, and without a doubt, it'd be a welcome attraction to the city. Events and many tournaments can be hosted at the park by us. We have, I know, our buddy Wes, uh, mutual friend between me and Alex, he has a group that he's associated with called the Noodle, Noodle Arm Disc Golf Group, and they run tournaments, and they can do little mini events and everything like that. There would be plenty of opportunities to build around the course and, and the park for years to come. There's also a local disc golf course called Discoholic's in Belton, uh, right down the street. They are interested in working with us, and they can bring out booths. And Dalton mentioned it, we get moved forward. Uh, we can do a, uh, little ribbon-cutting ceremony, have food trucks, and they'd be, you know, uh, bring out a little booth and be able to sell disc for kids, and all the way up to any age adult. And they would help move forward and ensure the success of the, of the course, and that's it for this.
Thank you, thank you.
Any, any questions?
Do we need to take any motion on that? Do we just, any motion needed on this right here, for any?
Yes, um, so presentation, so ultimately, it is within the 5,000 range of, of doing it, but this was such a unique kind of opportunity. You know, we wanted to bring it to council to get everybody's thoughts, since it is kind of a welcome attraction in the community. Doesn't necessarily need a motion, but I think definitely it's, you know, warrants discussion and kind of get everybody's thoughts on it.
I know, a while back, several years ago, you, you was on the council.
Yeah.
This was brought up, but it was brought up in a, in a different, uh.
Smith Park, wasn't it?
Yeah, in a different, uh, sense, because the council member that was going to take care of it dropped the ball, of course, he, he moved back to Tennessee. And, uh, he had made arrangements for, I guess, to put it on a circuit. But the way he wants to do it is not for a professional circuit. It's just for us everyday people to enjoy it, if we want to. Like you added Anse Park, where they've added and improved the kiddie land over there for the children to play, well, this is for the big kids to play on, so.
Big kids too.
You know, that's, I think it'd be a good idea, you know.
Well, the other thing is, the other one was at Smith Park, which trees had to be removed, the terrain was rough.
Here at Anse, you have, there's no alterations needed. I've already designed it to go around the trees, and, and it doesn't throw over any roadways or anything.
So like the path, is there, is there nine, this is ignorance, is there nine baskets?
Yes, nine baskets.
Okay, and then the path around it, is that just, it's not really a path, you just kind of walk to?
You just walk in the grass. Yeah, you can walk along the road, you can walk in the grass.
Okay, so the baskets, I guess, are labeled one through nine?
Yes.
And when you talk about a tee box?
Yeah, it's a little square concrete or any, what, you can, at U M H B in Belton, they use this dirt. You just walk in dirt, and they have a little piece of wood on the ground. It could be as simple as that, where you can go as high up as turf tee pads or concrete tee pads, and you stand on those, and you do your little run-up, and you throw from the tee pad. That's your, your drive box, your tee box.
Shot into the basket, okay.
Essentially, same thing as ball golf, regular golf, everyone plays, where you're just throwing the disc.
Yeah.
Now, are the posts going to be removable or permanent?
Uh, you can remove them, yes.
Okay.
There's two different ways you can do it. You can have, you can just drive a singular pole and then slide the disc, or the basket, into the pole and lock it in place for prevent theft.
That would simplify the planning, right?
Yeah, yeah, you just drive the pole in, and it'd be easy to take a pole, saw a digger, just put one hole in the ground, instead of putting like a concrete, concreted it into the ground. You would, you can still remove it, but I think the pole would be the best way to, in and out, and you can remove it.
Yeah, because that, that's one, that would prevent the, what we talked about. If the, uh, barbecue competition come in there, then the poles could be removed, and there'd be no obstruction for parking, because that was my main concern.
Yeah, they're completely removable. It's hardly a permanent structure. The only thing permanent about the whole course is the tee pads, and like that, you can just park on it. You can put stuff on it, it doesn't really, doesn't really affect anything.
It sounds really neat. One, one of the things that they did, they also kind of got sponsors. Of course, I guess you got your money back. I know y'all sponsored one of them. I was on the council too, and they got people to sponsor.
Take our money. Well, I was gonna, we was gonna sponsor it, well, then he had to.
Right, did you get your money back?
Uh, I, I never did. He never did get sponsors. He asked, you know, he said, well, I will get sponsors. I volunteered to sponsor one of those.
Uh-huh.
But he never came to me to get the money to complete it, yeah.
That was, that was something too, as far as money. People like to have, you know, their, you know, get a little name on it, one of the things.
In regards to sponsors, we could always move forward with something like that later on, and have someone donate money to go back into the course maintenance and then, uh, baskets, and just maintain the course.
Uh, I like the idea, and it's not interfering with anything on our master park plan. Uh, you know, it'd be, it'd be fun for you to present it to EDC, because they do, you know, they, they're the ones that have the master park plan together for the city.
Yeah.
But, uh, I love the idea. I loved it back when they first talked about it. So it brings other people in the city, and our citizens out there, and family fun, so, yeah.
And being able, being able to, being able to remove the post, that won't interfere with the maintenance of the park.
Right.
No, and, and, you know, one of the things too, and, and, you know, great job on the presentation, Porzma, you know, one thing I really want to highlight, I think more importantly on this, I think you approached me, what, almost a year ago, maybe a little over? Yeah, for the Smith Park one. For the Smith Park one, and I pretty much said, kick it to you and come back when you're, when you're ready. And it, it probably took about a year of research and working, you know, trying to work. Uh, again, we tried Smith Park, but there's, there's just too many complexities that, that we can address later on, and, uh, he presented this a couple of weeks ago, you know, and I, I actually feel really bad that I didn't get it in there. He had a really nice, uh, PowerPoint presentation, you know, that basically talked about everything he had done, and, you know, well-thought-out, well-researched, and so, uh, I definitely commend him for, for all the hard work he did on that.
And, you know, since you have so many police officers in it, uh, sometimes out at Anse Park, we've had vandalism with the bathrooms and the basketball courts.
Yeah.
So anyway, so get this disc golf team, a police officer, step up and catch these, catch these criminals.
Do we need to have a voter, you think, or?
I mean, it's, it's within the financial policies.
Okay, okay.
But, you know, if ever, you know, I think the vote really is just, you know, the, you know, council support of it, really, so.
We good? Everybody good? Let it go at that, thank you very much, Josh.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Josh.
Dalton here.
Thank you for the work you did on it.
Okay, item 11, resolution 2022-13 is a proposal for Oak Court Drainage. I need, and this can be presented by Jesse, so I need somebody to accept that resolution, please. Do I hear?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, in a second, please?
Yeah.
I'll second.
In a brief second, okay. Now we're at the presentation, and then we'll have discussion. Tell us about it, Jesse.
It's pretty simple, on Great West Loop, a relatively flat area, but does slope off in drainage. The roadways at the intersection of Great West and Oak Court are built up. They catch water, channel it, and then divert it towards private properties. And after a rain, they continue to hold water for days or even a week or so within that area. There's a lot of ways to drain it. Laying a pipe under the street comes up a great, but drainage ditches both sides and out towards the private property where we'd have to acquire easements. The swale is pretty simple. It's just a dip in the road, allows the water flow across the road and continue on its natural drainage route. And the, there, it can dry up, will divert it away from people's homes.
Is it going over the road, Jim?
Yes, with this, yeah.
Do we need a resolution for that? Is that something that's not routine maintenance under?
Um, so.
I mean, what do we?
This would actually be a concrete dip in the roadway itself, to allow water to pass.
So really, what's kind of coming to it, yes, it's kind of routine maintenance.
This one was a really unique project to highlight some of the drainage challenges. So it doesn't just impact one home, you know, looking at this pie, this is kind of what we can expect on Great West Loop as far as drainage projects. So if we find other areas, you know, this started with doing engineering and design, which is really in the purview of maintenance or water wastewater, however you want to look at it. This was kind of the final, you know, project, but because of the cost of the project and because it wasn't budgeted, this is kind of the budget amendment to it.
Oh, okay, so we're looking at budget.
Yeah, this is kind of a, a small piece to a larger puzzle of drainage, what these kind of look like, the engineering and design that you get out of this, you know, how it kind of impacts, you know, not just one resident, but how the drainage kind of flows, you know, through this area, showing the different kind of concepts of it. That's kind of what this resolution is for, really for the budget amendment piece, but also kind of going forward. Some of the things that if y'all like this kind of concept, then we can do more of these. If we decide not to do a full on drainage study, you know, we can kind of do these kind of pocket ones where we identify issues where then we're not having to do a massive project. We can do smaller pocket ones to, to fix drainage in certain areas.
Is this fifty grand, is that pretty much, pretty close to where we need to be on it?
So the engineering of probable cost, you know, came in at whatever Jesse was, was saying. So the reason why we went up to the fifty, which really it's technically forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, is once it goes over fifty, we have to go for competitive bidding. Because it's under, we can get three quotes and negotiate and do what we can with that. We wanted to put that on there. Again, it doesn't have to be the full fifty, but we didn't want to just limit it to the twenty-three thousand in case there was, you know, thirty percent based off of the market. So we didn't want to have to come back to council for, you know, for, you know, something small for five or ten thousand. So we just wanted to say, "Look, if it goes beyond competitive bill, bidding, then we need to go forward and go with the competitive bidding process, which will then be a lot more, we'll have to bring back the council anyways."
I think the main thing I met with Jesse today and Dalton on it, I wanted to make sure, one, it wasn't just for one home because, taking, because I know of one home that there's been a problem almost into their house with this. But when you explained it to me about the houses being built in the area and encompassed a lot and will probably get worse without it. And then we did a project similar on Bay Court, if y'all have a chance to go by Bay Court, that had a lot of water flow into that street area and drainage. And that seems, that seems to work very successful, doesn't it, Jesse, the one on Bay?
Yes, it does, and some of the newer housing additions in the area are very similar, the same way the streets are pre-planned for it. So they're not as large as what we, we have to do here where our streets are not pre-planned. They work very well.
The other challenge too, and, and this was actually, you know, one of Jesse's doing, you know, I've been typically used to stormwater and piping. The challenge with that is, one, it's expensive. And two, especially when you're already kind of, I don't say built out, but when there's not a lot of easements, now you have to ask them for, you know, homeowners and property owners for easements. And then if you don't and it's such a large impact, then the council has a tough decision of condemnation, which never goes well. So by doing the swells, you kind of take the natural flow of, of the land already and you divert it into natural drainage easements. And of course, the cost, I think this one went from fifty-six-ish thousand with stormwater plus, you know, having to go on to the easement of the property to down to twenty-three at least, opinion of, of engineering of probable cost. So if this kind of concept is a lot cheaper, which potentially can save, you know, more money over time and last a while. And then not impact the, the water getting underneath the roadway.
Right, yeah, with the, the standing water on the side of the roadways, it'll seep under, soften the road beds and then the roadway itself collapses over time.
It's okay, that's what we have to do. This needs to be done and we've pushed a lot of this off for years, a lot of the drainage. So we need to address it as it comes up, as we can.
The other side is, it doesn't have to be done, but the problem's only going to perpetuate, you know, and, and as, you know, some of these issues can be addressed as, you know, road projects start coming up and we start figuring out roads. So this is just, this was kind of a multifaceted one of showing, hey, this was an issue, this is a way, way to fix it, is it the end all be all? No. You know, but as far as the alternatives in the short term, there's really not much alternative we can do for this particular.
Council, does anybody have any discussion, comments?
I guess my comment would be, you know, if we're looking at altering the road, wouldn't this be something we put into our master plan of, of road construction and, and basically road repair? I guess we're talking about how deep of a depression in the roadway are you talking about there?
The concrete portion, it dips three inches. The asphalt portion of the roadway, our roads are crowned, so that rainwater runs off the sides. So it's a small dip on the edges and a larger dip in the center. And it's all, the asphalt will be tapered all in together into this concrete soil.
I mean, I understand we got to do something with drainage, don't have an issue with that at all. What I'm talking about is, you know, like twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand dollars is, you know, building that into, okay, next year we're going to appropriate half a million dollars for roadway. I'm just using a number, right? You know, include this in that, because it's not something that's an emergency we have to do right at the moment, is that correct?
Um, no, the, the question will be though is, you know, where, and I'd have to look, I'd have to look at the, the map I've slept since then. The question will be, is that, is that part of Great West Loop? Where is that on the road priority list?
Right.
You know, out of however many miles of it. So to your point, we absolutely could use the appropriated road maintenance, you know, to cover the cost of this that, you know, that we do have. So at one hundred percent, if we put it off and we do get the, the road maintenance plan or another study or however we want to do that, if that part of Great West Loop, as an example, is not, you know, on a priority list, it could be multiple years before, you know, before that gets hit. So that, that's just, that's just what I don't know.
Of course, the other question is, if we incorporate this into road repair, is it less cost to do it with a road repair or without?
Um, in this particular case, I, I don't have a good answer for it. I mean, I think yes, you know, if you include, you know, the swells and other things into engineering, but I'm going to throw a wrench in that one. The only way you can add more road repair and factor in the drainage into the road one is to know what the drainage is citywide, that you can then factor that into the future road repair. So without having the drainage, like if we do a road, we can engineer and design, you know, drainage just for that particular road. And so then we can get an idea of what that would do and build those in. So yes, we, we absolutely can build those drainage things into each road project, same with water, same with sewer. Insert issue here, infrastructure, we can fix it. And yes, it is always going to be cheaper to add way more into it. This one was a, a pretty, when we first got, you know, caught wind of it, this was a pretty isolated, you know, issue when we went out there during the storms. It was a substantial amount of water from that entire area coming into one focal point. So, yeah. No, no right or wrong answer on it, honestly.
Okay, if I do further discussion, I'm going to ask for a vote. And are we voting to do this currently? I mean, we're doing it now, so that, that's what the resolution would be, to do it now. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed?
Aye.
Just one opposed, all in favor, it passes. Thank you, thank you folks, thank you, council.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse, for your presentation on that too, thank you. Item number twelve, I need, item number twenty twenty-two dash one two twelve. It's going to be a compensation study, we need to talk about it, so I need to ask somebody to accept that resolution. Bruce, did you? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said.
I will.
Okay, Sean, in his second?
I'll second.
And Robbie's second, okay. This, uh, years ago, under a previous city manager, we had a, I don't know if we call it a compensation plan, what do you call it, Donald? What do we call it, a step plan maybe or?
Yeah, we did a step plan at one time.
And it was based on CDR more than it was on anything else. So that was been our only, really, compensation program. And I'm going to turn it over to Dalton, he, he would like to have another one, let, I'm going to let him discuss it, it's up to y'all from there.
Yeah, this, this is the, the challenging one of the evening. You know, we had looked at and talked about last budget one, you know, last budget, you know, doing a compensation study and analysis, this upcoming budget for October one. I don't think anybody really could have predicted what the world has done, what the market has done, what the labor's done, what inflation has been at, you know, kind of unprecedented highs. So let me start with kind of the current state that we're in. One, we don't know if there's ever been a compensation study done. If it has been done, I know it was done on departmental level. Either way, regardless, it's, it's going to be outdated, we just don't know where it's at. We don't know how outdated, we don't even have benchmarks, we can't tell. The other one is coming up on this budget cycle, what is a reasonable COLA or a cost of living? You know, and do we do one? There's going to be a lot of things that are kind of, that we're assessing right now, obviously in the budget. Prelim values are still on the table as far as, you know, the market value. We are, hate to rub salt in the room, we're seeing, you know, increases in, you know, the net taxable value across the board. So we're looking at all different ways to, to figure out that property tax issue, whether that's senior exemptions, lowering the property taxes, all of these items are being assessed. So one of the challenges coming up on the budget workshop is, well, what is going to be a reasonable COLA based off of the current market or the future market or our current state? The other one is, you know, we do have a good performance evaluation process. However, there's not really a merit tied to it, it's really kind of just an educated guess based off the market. Well, I don't know where we are at, at market. We can make a good, sound, educated guess. City of Belton did one, which I, again, we're not trying to compare the salaries to City of Belton, you know, but that being said, we don't have a lot of good benchmarks as far as where we can go, how we can do it and what we do. We're not even, from what we're looking at on Belton's, we're not even at the minimum on some of our, our salaries on it. So what we're kind of asking for on this, and Carrie and I went back and forth on this one. If we don't do this, that's okay, you know, we can put it into the next budget and kind of go from there. Come January of next year, we can kind of see where our midpoints are. And then a decision will, will have to be made by council at that point to say, do we bring them up to, you know, up to midpoint? How do we do it? How do we factor it in the budget? A lot of questions that we're trying to answer now. By doing the study now, we would have these numbers and making it, be able to make an objective market decision where we are at.
Before the budget.
Before the budget, which then is, is more objectively based, or we'll even say less subjective, than Carrie and I going in and scaling the market to try to see where we are and where we are not. Either way, we think there may be a sticker shock there associated with it, whether that is a subjective guess on what a good reasonable COLA is. We polled TC May Region Seven, which is relatively central Texas and all the cities in central Texas, all the way to Waco, down to Austin, as well as TC May Region Six, which is Houston, and tried to get it just a good idea. Many city managers right now don't even know what they're looking at. About half of them polled so far, they don't know, too early, which not, not uncommon, prelims are just now coming out. The ones that have responded, we're looking at anywhere between a five to a seven percent cost of living. And most of them have either step plans or they're looking at merit-based increases from about one point two to three point two percent. So anywhere between a seven, eight to almost a ten percent increase. Now, that's with people, or that's with cities who are doing comp studies, you know, every two or three years. They're relatively close to at market, most of their changes, when they do comp studies, it only impact a few, they don't even have to benchmark all of them. We don't have any benchmarks, so we can't even tell. The other kind of unique challenge that we have is what do we hire at? Do we hire at market, which could then, you know, be potentially over, because what is market for Morgan's Point Resort? We don't even have a range, so we don't have mid, mid, minimums, midpoints or maximums to determine what is the best course of action to go or to try to figure that into a future pay-for-performance or merit-based increase. So really, coming to council on this one, you know, kind of in, in really uncertain times of saying, well, what is the best course of action? If we do this now where all the market and everything is, is really unique, if we have opportunities to bring senior exemptions, potentially some property tax relief a little bit, you know, is now the best time? I don't know. Do we wait, you know, a year and say, hey, let's take a chance and, and, and do a shot in the dark kind of, you know, COLA with no raise? And then we fact, we figure that out in January, mid-budget, which would then be a budget amendment potentially? I don't know. I don't have a good answer for this one. This one is challenging, you know, no matter what, because how do you, you know, make the best determination? My opinion and, and, and just my recommendation on it, again, this is the council's decision on this one. My recommendation is do an objective study now. It'll allow us to objectively see where we're at on the market. It'll allow us to determine mid, mid and max points on salary ranges. We'll be able to objectively make a COLA slash, you know, raise type decision through that study going into this next year. We do not have to go to a hundred percent, we can scale that in if it happens to be a higher number. But it gives us a more objective option versus budget workshop, hey, what is a reasonable COLA? Because that's going to, it, it, you know, if we don't go this route, that's okay. We just need to start thinking about what is going to be acceptable on a cost of living slash, you know, raise increase, or how do we want to do that? So that's, that's my soapbox speech on that one.
I know we're going to have comments, I'm going to start, Donald, I know you've got some comments on it.
How do you know?
Because I know everybody does.
Well, and I talked to, Dalton and I talked about this too at length. Studies, sometimes I don't really care so much for studies. Like I was looking at Belton's one and they were comparing Belton to Colleen. My opinion, there's no comparison. I mean, take the police department, a Belgian police department is a clean, it's like night and day. So that's my only fear with this study is the comparables. And, and I know Dalton said they'd try to get comparables closer to our size city. We're really unique. There's a lot of employees that are out here that could make more money but love the, the atmosphere, the working conditions or whatever. So it's, it's just, you know, twenty-one, five, you know, we're spending money to get this study done. I realize it's not a bad time to get it done and I don't have strong feelings against it. It's just, I think I'm getting burnt out of studies and I just want to make sure. If we can't use the study, if you're looking at it and you're like, how does that even compare? You know, because there's other cities that are small, but maybe they have a lot of crime in their city or, or their, their water department is not as incredible as our water department or have as many numbers of employees. So it's real hard to do that and we've done that over the years. We have done comparable studies, we've done in-house studies and like, like he said, step programs. I'm not hard and fast about it, if y'all feel this is what we need to do, I'm not going to oppose it. It's just I do have concerns about doing some of these studies to see what cities we're going to be compared to. And then, and then we do this study and they're like, oh, we should be making this amount of money. And, you know, there's just more to it, you know, retirement, different things. So anyway, I'm, I'm just not real big on these kind of studies, but I'm not, I'm not hard and fast on it if y'all are comfortable with doing it.
No, that's my, that's my question too, when I talk to Dalton is, who are we going to be compared to? Because we are a unique city since we're so small. So, you know, who are they going to compare us to? So we had, we had a discussion about all of that.
And, and to that point, you know, some of, you know, the, the analysis on these where, yes, we can go through and kind of look at comparable cities, you know, i.e. McGregor, but really, in all honesty, I think every city is a unique city. So that's where, you know, some of the unique challenges come in. But what they do to the point of like Belton, Temple, Colleen, is in, in the Belton study that you'll have, there's what's called a geographic factor. And there's science and algorithm and chemistry and whatever they do, but they factor in the geographic factor. So even though they're maybe comparing it to Colleen, for example, it's weighted differently in how they factor in all the market data and how they factor, you know, how they do that. We can do that, it's just extremely time consuming, you know, and then again, it goes back to, well, what is, what is acceptable, what's not? So, yeah, I, I know this one is not an easy one, you know, yeah, this one's, this one's tough.
Bruce, you got a question?
We're special, we're Morgan's Point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is, you know, every city is unique. I know that, I actually went and looked last night, did a little, little looking around. You know, all municipalities and public employees, their salaries are public information. You can get it. I mean, some of them are updated current, some of them are not. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of, one thing I'm, I'm wondering, you know, the twenty-one, five, where that number, I mean, that came from logic, right? But, you know, is there less expensive surveys out there for it all? I, my request would be that, you know, we take, say, I don't know, take a snapshot of six or eight cities that are, you know, under six thousand employees, I mean, under six thousand residents. So it's kind of comparable to Morgan's Point, but then you got to look at, you know, we have things, what's our benefit package compared to their benefit package? You know, I'm all for, for being fair with our employees and paying them very well. I mean, we, we love the people that work for the city, right? And we want to take care of them, but on the other side, we have a responsibility to taxpayers to do our due diligence. And so, you know, my request would be that, that, you know, someone in your office send a, a letter to comparable sized cities wanting to know, okay, what do these positions pay? And of course, it's public knowledge, so, you know, they, they'll give you that information.
The other thing I got to say on that right there, a lot of times you can look comparable sized cities, Bruce. But I'm going to use a couple of cities I know, for instance, Port Aransas has a population of thirty-five hundred, they get two hundred thousand dollars a month in sales tax. You know, there's, there, you've got, I mean, just because they're our size, I mean, there's a lot of places.
I don't think we're just talking about size, I think we're talking about comparables, we're talking about comparables.
Even, you know, McGregor, somebody has a, has a viable downtown, Gonzalez, I mean, they actually have a downtown, they're three thousand population.
And so to, to answer your question, you know, the, this, I called two references, you know, that have, you know, used LDC before, Jay Stokes down in Deer Park, they've used them since two thousand thirteen. Obviously, they're a larger city. So as far as the references of the comp study, they're not, you're not going to get any cheaper. We tried, we asked the caller to see if they do stuff like this and they don't. These comp studies range from anywhere between, you know, eighteen thousand all the way up to fifty thousand. You know, higher you go, obviously you RFP it and, you know, typically do that. So we negotiated this down, you know, under the statute to, you know, twenty-one, five. So there is some benefits, you know, comparison part of this that'll help kind of, you know, determine some of the benefits. We initially, before we reached out to them or as we were waiting for the proposal, I sat down and I spent about four hours going through comparable cities, trying to dive into not just populations, but budgets, diversity and everything else, and I didn't even scratch the surface. So that's kind of where, you know, where the unique side of it is, is if we had an HR department, that's, you know, we can ideally kind of task some of that. Sending it to the departments, it, it was tried once, went back through some of the data on, on going through the departments. And again, it goes back to, if we bring, and we've had these conversations before, if we bring that study and that data back to you, is that going to be acceptable? Or is it subjective enough to where having that third party, you know, entity that specializes in it, would that change the subjectivity of who it's coming from or where it's coming from? I don't know.
You know, one other thing that I was thinking of, the twenty-one, five, I'd rather see that in raises for our staff than a study. And, and the other thing, and I think you suggested, you were, you were talking about this, the inflation rate, which we will be able to figure it. I think one time they tied it to social security, but we'll be able to figure that. And the other thing is you talked about a, kind of a percentage, one point two to whatever, three or whatever, based on merit, which I always like merit. And we do evaluations for merit and we need to do evaluations every year. And then the other thing that we've done is if there's a salary that's completely out of line, by comparing it to the other salaries we've had, we've had clerks before that were disparity, there's been different times. We can address those. But anyway, I, I, I'm just not, and like I said, I'm not that big on studies because they're just as good as, you know, what we want to take them to be, so.
I, you know, and I agree with you, this is a sensitive deal. And as I've been on my second term and we've had these conversations about our, our employees throughout the community, I kind of feel like we always struggle and some of it is with the emotional side. You know, we, we want to be good to our employees and, and we want, we want a long tenure, we want them to stay and what's going to, what's going to keep them here? What I struggle with is the emotional side too, is that at some point as, as city volunteers and doing the best thing for our cities and our, and our community, sometimes we have to take the emotional side out, take the objective. and our, and our community, sometimes we have to take the emotional side out, take an objective look at it. And I just, I don't know. I, my first thought was, okay, yeah, that's twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars that we're spending. But is it gonna give us a, a more objective view of, of where we are as a city and our, and our, and our employees? I, I, that's, that's really, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of like, okay, yeah, it's twenty-one thousand, but I don't know that I've ever really had an objective conversation about, about this. And we struggle with it and then we usually wind up falling short to what we probably should have done, right? And maybe this will show us a little better of where we are as a city with, with regard to our employees and our, and our, and our pay, pay level.
I'm good. How about?
John?
I'm kind of on the fence about it, but, uh, if we're gonna do it, I like to do it quickly so we have it before budget. I think it would be a helpful tool.
Could be a starting point.
Yeah, it's a good starting point.
Well, since we've had a discussion, we got, I'm gonna ask for a vote.
I'm, I'm just gonna say one other thing, Dennis, excuse me. We're kind of, you know, I guess because we have the emotional side of it, like you remember, was, was it last year or the year before? We took our police and fire and it's like, how can we increase their salaries with, but, you know, how do we measure this that there's an increase? If you remember, we went to a medical, if they had medical license above and beyond what they needed, if they had certifications above and beyond what we needed. So I honestly think because we do agonize over it, we've done a pretty good job of using different types of things to help with it, but.
Do they take that in consideration?
Yeah. So one of the, the piece of that too is like, so if, if, cause that was, that, that was kind of the big challenge of, okay, you know, I think we could as a council, you know, and, you know, staff, we could figure out a comparable cola. We could probably figure out comparable salary or, you know, raises. But are we even close to base? Are we, where are we at on the mid, mid, max of those, you know, those salaries? So even if we did a five percent, you know, cola with a two percent, you know, raise and they get seven percent, are they even on par with where they should be on a base salary with a comparable? So that's, that's just what I have no clue on. Not to mention too, you know, bringing, you know, you know, folks in. We don't have that kind of, that range to kind of objectively base it off of. So it, it's just, it's just more objective data. Uh, it's just a, I'm not saying that we, what we've done has been wrong. I think we're just kind of at that point in time, just from my perspective, looking at all the salaries, diving into, to try to be as objective as possible. I honestly, I honestly kind of feel that I hit a point where I'm like, you know what, I'm being as objective as possible, but this is not enough. And I don't feel like we're doing, that I'm doing the due diligence enough, which is why I'm asking on this one, because I just, I just don't know.
Oh, yeah. And you look at some of these studies that have been done and you've talked about the mid, mid, max, right? And some of these are, you know, the salary starts at, at twenty thousand dollars and goes up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, yeah, again, it's how focused is this study gonna be on, you know, exactly a like city? Because like I say, you know, different cities have all kinds of different tax income. I mean, their, their revenue, revenue is so much different and that's what drives that salary range. It's, it's a hard one. No, it really is. I mean, and like, you know, even in the private sector, we struggle with that. And so it's.
If we don't do, do a study, then how do we collectively sit down and come up with what we need to be doing for our employees?
That, if, that's gonna be my next question and, you know, is if, if, you know, council doesn't want to move on this, then really it's gonna be seeking advice on how y'all want to kind of do this objectively. And this is something we would have to really work together on because it is a touchy area.
So I make a motion, we accept, we do this comparison study. So we have something to fall back on.
Do we have any say in what cities and stuff like that we, we use?
A hundred percent. Yeah, we, we will, I mean, we're gonna be a part, it's not just a fire and forget. We're gonna be a part of the process.
Yeah.
You know, we'll have, we'll have, you know, we'll have the cities and the meetings, you know, we're gonna make sure that we objectively pick it and, and, yeah. I mean, we're, you know, this isn't their first rodeo as far as, you know, studies on it, but yeah, we'll be one hundred percent a part of that process.
I would give one more and just add to this. If, if we get the study, I think that there needs to be a workshop that follows.
I agree.
Correct. And that's, and so the goal of it would be is if council moved on it and approved, um, we would have the numbers by budget workshop. So we could either do a workshop prior to, or we can include that into the budget workshop itself. Cause you know, let's just say as an example, it came back in, at a hundred percent. Well, you can implement the plan, not at a hundred percent. You can scale that plan in to where you're not having to do it. So it just gives the more objective data, you know, going in where you say like, ah, we don't want to sticker shock on it. I mean, for example, Belton had a eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase. Now they have a hundred and seventy employees, seventy-five job classes, and they do studies fairly often. So if they were that far off with studies, I just worry about how far we're off, even just being as objective and careful as possible. But we don't have to go the full hundred percent. That's what's kind of great is they, these studies will give you, and this particular one had it in the plan. It'll give you a, a budget implementation process, um, ahead of time.
I know it needs to go in the budget workshop, but I think this needs to be its own separate workshop personally. I think when you talk about it, pass it out, come up with a consensus and move forward into the, into the budget workshop.
I, I agree with Robbie. In fact, that's probably the only way that I would vote for this. Because when we get this study back, our work doesn't stop. It just begins.
Just starts.
And then we're gonna have to filter through it and compare jobs and this, this is gonna be an arduous task. And I agree with you, uh, Robbie, it needs to be a separate workshop, you know, council oriented coming from it. Because we'll have our work cut out doing this study, so.
Salaries are our biggest, biggest expense. So that's the biggest issue we have.
Okay, we've all discussed it. This, uh, let's go.
Sean made a motion.
I made a motion. We accept, we're going with this study.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll take it and run. And we will have, in addition to that, we will have a separate workshop on, on that. Okay. So I'll be sure that, we'll be sure to add that. Okay. Jay, are you the next one with the, with the animals at large?
What's that?
Are you the man with the animals at large?
He is the man.
Okay. I have number thirteen, uh, two thousand twenty-two dash oh four ordinance on, uh, animals at large. And I think, uh, I need somebody to accept that, please.
I mean, if we accept ordinance twenty, twenty-two oh four.
And it's second?
I'll second.
And Bruce second. Okay. Do we know what this is? Were you gonna talk, gonna talk about it, Dalton? I think, I've read it, but do you wanna bring it up to see what?
I'm actually gonna kick this one to Jay. It's relatively simple. I think it was just a, a definition kind of change, you know, to clarify it relatively straightforward.
We're not talking about large animals. We're just talking animals at large.
Some of them are large.
Some of them are large.
Dalton saw the bite from the last one.
Yes.
Pretty bad, but, uh, no, honestly, a lot of close calls, a lot of outcry, you know, public outcry. You know, a lot of phone calls where people are walking their dogs and they're terrified because dogs are in their yard, running up on them, you know, aggressively. Not even when they're not even leaving the yard, but it, it terrifies the person, the, you know, the citizen walking their dog or whoever it is. We have had accidents where the dogs did leave the property and, you know, the owner was just like, I didn't think my dog would ever do that. Uh, the extensive training, you know, the electric, uh, invisible fence, just lots of things. And I've always been uncomfortable with our definition of at large. It was open debate, you know, and for what other means of confinement was. I looked at Katie in Fort Worth, Texas, you know, mostly to see what they had. I like Katie's, uh, definition of at large, um, and basically it talks about physical, you know, actual barriers, actual material collars connected to a, you know, leashes connected to a collar, a collar系. And, and I just think that's where we need to go with this.
I didn't say people were making.
Do we need to have you look at drafting or present it with a, a draft on, uh, an ordinance on that? Is that, that be the way to go on that?
Is this a leash? Is this a leash ordinance?
This is an amendment to the definition, I think, of the ordinance.
Well, it also added quite a bit to the ordinance.
And quite adding quite a bit to the ordinance.
Sorry, isn't it against the law to tie an animal with a leash like to a tree?
Actually only a chain.
Chain, chain.
The chain itself is what's illegal. And then you, you can be, you know, you can be breaking the law with any type of tether with other conditions, you know, attached to it. Less than five times the length of the dog and inclement weather, things like that.
But we're talking about containment?
What's that?
Are we talking about fencing, containment?
Well, uh, uh, everything in the ordinance, it talks about an actual barrier, a fence. And, and, and I, I make a reference in there to, to an animal, whether it is off, on the property of the owner or off property of the owner. It needs to be confined, restrained by a leash, collar, make enclosure, you know, fence. Just, just try to make it clear and beat to death that it's gotta have an actual physical barrier.
Okay. So this, this, this says that?
Yes.
Okay.
And Jay, we may want to remove the word chain from it just because, you know, since that law cha, uh, changed about chaining your animals. If we have this, they'll say, wait a minute, this is a, you know, so maybe take that word out, keep in your leash cord or other suitable material attached to a collar or harness. Maybe just don't even say chain. Would that work for you?
Is that in the old ordinance?
It's under suggested definition change at large, not under the control of the owner, either by leash, chain, cord or other suitable.
Yeah, okay, absolutely.
Okay.
Now, my question, I have a question on it.
Cause I did put in there, I'm sorry, I did put in there lower in the, in the ordinance that it is illegal to chain a dog. So I will, I will make that.
Chain it. Your crotty station, I'll get your crotty system.
And there's usually, there's some ability clauses.
Whenever you change the physical barrier, that means that the people that have the little, they're supposed to shock them to keep them in. Those little barriers are no longer acceptable.
That's what I'm going for.
Okay. So what they'll have to do then, they will have to fence that in.
Right.
Yes.
I had one question on it, uh, under, uh, subparicase C where it says, uh, registration of dog and cats. It doesn't say in here about visitors or it doesn't exclude a visitor. It says it shall be unlawful for the owner or guardian of any dog or cat in the city, if they're visiting, they're in the city, to fail to obtain an annual license tag for such animals from the city and display such tag from the collar or harness.
If you start reading in the definitions on what a owner or guardian is, you can make the argument that they, they would have to at least, you know, there's no way around being vaccinated for the rabies virus. You could also make the argument about the registration, but I, I don't know if we want to hold people to that standard, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, is, is, is a visitor required to register a dog bringing it into the city?
Uh, depending on what you consider a visitor, somebody coming in for the weekend, I would say no.
Right. But that's not what it reflected in here, so.
Okay. And that's, that's on the, well, there, there, that part of the de, uh, the ordinance is the same on both. So I'll look at that.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a problem with citizens. Yeah, everybody who's a citizen is gonna have a dog here at any time.
Yeah.
Yes, they need to be licensed with the city.
Okay, absolutely.
I'm just saying like a weekend visitor or something like that. It doesn't spell that out.
Okay. We've had a, we had a motion on that. Had it seconded. Is there anybody in the other further discussion? Anybody have any questions on it? Is Jay here? If not, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Dalton, would you like to have, give the general, our citizens a brief explanation of our retreat?
I thought I was off the hook on this one. This one, this one's council. I'll let y'all speak.
Well, we had a retreat, had a good time, folks.
And at the end of it.
We did have a, we did have a council retreat with not only the council, but all of the department heads, uh, back earlier in the year in March, wasn't it?
In March, yeah.
In March. And had a facilitator come in. She did a very good job. Basically, we, we had everybody there trying to get on the same, same, uh, timeline and same track. You know, sometimes departments compete against each other for budget or personnel or equipment or whatever, you know, uh, which is common. But most everybody we get, got together, uh, everybody's working together. We've got a great, great crew here all the way around from every, every department. And they work together and they cover each other's backs. So, uh, there were a lot of things that we looked at, but, uh, anything anybody wants to add on it? Everybody was, everybody was here. Have any questions or any statements to add?
And we didn't, we didn't get together and party either.
No, it wasn't a party.
Yeah, it, it was a discussion about our strengths, weaknesses, uh, opportunities for the cities, the threats that, uh, uh, we could face. And, uh, just, you know, general subject like that. And we just broke it down, uh, into several goals. Financial audits, planning for the future, infrastructure, grants, economic development, communications, emissions and the vision, the vision that we had for the city. So a lot, a lot of stuff went on during those, uh, paid hours.
You know, y'all may not believe it, but we don't get together. We don't party. We don't see each other except through council meetings or meetings. So we don't get a chance to see what Larry's, uh, goal is or what Robbie liked to do or Sean or Bruce. What do you, what do you, what are your goals and objectives for the city? We don't get to do that, uh, except for the hour, two hours that we're here on council meeting night. So this is an opportunity for us to, to kind of mingle and, and get that information together. And, uh, because they, we're just like you, we don't see them once a month. And, uh, it's hard to, hard to plan something when you don't know what you're thinking, except when the ten minutes or two minutes you give us, uh, some responses. So, uh, it was, it was a good, it was a good project, very good, even when I thought it was.
Yeah. If we sat here tonight and discussed the topics and went into just a little bit of detail, we'd be here till about three o'clock in the morning. If you'd like to see it, you can go up, pull it up on the website. That's how thick it is right there. And it gives a good breakdown of what we discussed and the ideas and stuff that we all came up with up there and where it goes.
Okay, I'm gonna move right along. The nine amount, number fifteen is, uh, removed now toward the end here, is a budget timeline. And, uh, we got that in the packet here. Uh, of course, that's always subject to change, but it gives us a pretty good idea of where we need to be and when.
Yeah, the pretty straightforward, um, most of the dates are the dates in bold are typically dates that have to happen. Those are benchmarks that we have to meet, you know, in accordance with the state law. So we will add the, uh, additional workshops in here and, and it can adjust. So really anything that's not in bold, we can pretty much make some adjustments on if there's other dates that work better for y'all. Other than that, the ones that are, are in bold, um, there is very limited changes that we can do. Really bottom line, we can, if we, if we want to go to the last, you know, twenty-fifth hour, we can go all the way to September twenty-ninth if we need to. Uh, we, we factored in a buffer in there just in case, uh, for pretty much everything finalized and done by September thirteenth. But timeline is in accordance with state statute.
Well, this gives everybody an idea of, of our agenda. If, if you want to plan vacation or timeout, or if there's something that conflicts with your vacation or timeout, and we still have the opportunity possibly to change some of it. So it just gives you a six, eight month, uh, window to, to plan.
And then, and then the other thing, you know, we sent an email out on it before. Some, some of y'all have responded. If y'all want to do the, uh, Belton workshop, May twentieth, um, we, there's a basically half day workshop that kind of goes into the budget process. You know, for, for those who it's kind of new to, it is a lot of information. Uh, so it is, it is a good little piece. Belton, it's in Belton, May twentieth, and then if you can't make that one, we can go to Bastrop, June thirtieth. I think it was June thirtieth. So there's two of them that you can go to. So just let us know if y'all would like to attend to that. And either Carrie, Carrie and I will be at, at one of those if, if one of y'all want to go to the Bastrop one.
Well, I picked one of the twentieth that you.
Yes, yeah, we got you on the, on the twentieth. Yes, sir.
Okay. And now we're gonna talk to Jimbo and we'll save you to the very end. We could put you, next to it, next time we'll put you at the beginning. Are you going to sit through all of this?
I intentionally put him at the end.
Bookending it, open it up and close it up. So, um, good evening again, uh, Home Rule Committee. Um, our last meeting was the twenty-ninth. Couple of things that I just want to highlight for, uh, for, uh, you, sir, and the council is that our, our board members, our committee members, I should say. Uh, every time we meet, we're learning more and more and more and more. I'm really impressed at all the investigative process that's taken place by all the committee members, just going through and, and doing their own research and due diligence, trying to, um, figure things out as we go, basically. So, um, we are currently in the process of revisiting several items, um, that we have, uh, kind of bookmarked, either because we were deadlocked in a vote that we took, or it was just something that we knew there were going to be second and third order effects down the road based on, um, the decisions that were made. So we are, we are going back and revisiting some items right now. Made it through, if I had to put a number on it, probably about ninety percent of the initial process, um, going through our checklist and, and the different survey questions that we're using and all that's available on the website, by the way, I can fill that out there. So, um, it's, it, it has been a very productive process. Uh, there have been several changes. Or there were several changes at the level of last meeting, uh, based on some of those things that were revisited. So, um, I, I think that all goes back to how the committee members are learning as we go. So, um, I, I think that all goes back to how the committee members are learning as we go, so. Um, one of the things that we're trying to keep in mind is that as we develop the charter, um, we have to kind of go back and stop and push pause every now and then, say, hey, look, we are planning for the future, not for the current. So that's something that we, we try to not lose sight of. The citizen input, uh, has been amazing, um, town halls, at the meetings themselves with public comment on social media, face to face, just getting, I don't want to say accosted, but that's my joke word, you know, just meeting people who, who come up, hey, can I talk to you for a minute? So, um, super impressed with our citizens getting involved and, and wanting to know things, asking questions and, um, and just trying to understand the process. Uh, from kind of my foxhole, that's one thing that we need to continue to improve on, um, uh, and that's to inform and educate everybody, not, not just the committee members and you guys, but our citizens as well, is what the process is, uh, what home rule is, what we're doing, why we're doing it. So, um, a couple of things that I'll highlight that came out of, of the last town hall and that, that I hear a lot is, um, just making sure everybody understands what the powers of the committee is, um, how we came together, through you wonderful people, thank you very much. Um, and, and what we're allowed to do, do's and don'ts and that kind of thing. So, uh, ultimately, the vote goes to the public, we try to make sure we reiterate that to everybody, that it's not, this, this is not our decision. Um, and, and just little things, and I'll just highlight this, and you know, some of the things that we hear a lot of conversation about are things like the budget. That's not in our lane, we, we have nothing to do with the budget, so, um, home rule has nothing really to do with the budget, so, uh, we're working through that. Our next meeting is scheduled for Friday the thirteenth, how fitting. This Friday, I'm in the library again at two o'clock, fourteen hundred feet Army G I Joes, uh, open to the public, of course, and we encourage everybody to be there. Uh, our next town hall is still to be determined, and that's just because we haven't really, there's no new ground yet for us to kind of meet and greet and discuss. So, um, we're kind of putting a pause on that. So I think that's all the notes I had, I was trying to keep it short, just to update you, subject to your questions.
Well, Jim, I know y'all have put a lot of work into this, we thank y'all for what you do, and I know you've got a couple of council, uh, committee members here, but I, I know, I know when you get something done, you have to go back through and it's not fine tuned until the very end. So I know there's a lot of things that had to be re, relooked at or whatever, then.
Yeah, that's.
I know there's a lot of work in it, and I know you got a long way to go yet, so, so thank y'all for what you do.
And we are just, for your information, I, I, I think, I believe that we are still on track to make all our timelines. Um, I don't feel like we've fallen behind, I think we're making good progress and we're going back and we're hitting the keynotes. So, um, the finalization of the process will be after we go through a couple more times, we'll just be one, start to finish, look through everything and, and see if there's any questions, not anything that, that.
We'll know back then, won't we?
Yeah, yeah, once we stand up and send it to you guys.
We'll see the finished product, we'll find out.
Job done.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for chairing this for us, I know that's a big job, you're doing great, you're doing great, yeah.
City manager, you have anything that you want to bring up?
Couple of quick things, um, if you look out to my right, your left, there is a fancy new shade sale, there's some pictures going out, um, maintenance and those teams, so that was, provide, uh, some shade for the kids and for the bald folks. Um, some of the other things that maintenance and, and public or utilities have been working on is we kind of did some re, relining of the kid pool. Uh, there were some chips in there, so they spent some time redoing that, so we're really excited for that this year. A little bit further to your left, um, over, over y'all's left shoulder, that railing system is brand new. Uh, maintenance put the new railing system in, took down the old rotted wood, um, and put that up, turned out really nice, they did a great job. Still have a little bit of work to do, but making some progress and we're, we're excited for the season. Talking about the season, uh, we're, we're solidifying and getting everything finalized, but it looks like we're gonna actually be able to provide swim lessons. We found somebody that wanted to contract with the city, uh, so we're working through all those, uh, details right now. But it looks like we're gonna be able to provide some, uh, swim lessons, you know, to our residents, and that was something that we got hammered on, you know, positively last year, that has been sought for, I think, a long time, uh, it's been ongoing. Uh, we tried to reach out to somebody, it fell through, then somebody kind of approached us on it, and we said, yeah, let's see what we can do. So we're looking forward to that, more to follow. Other thing, Lynn had.
Memorial Day opening?
Um, yes, so we're, the timeline should be, and I gotta get with Catrice on this, uh, the pool for swim lessons will be actually open a week early for swim lessons to get them ready for the season, so they're having a safe swim year. Memorial Day weekend open like normal, and then the following week, it's usually closed, but we are going to have swim lessons that week, so they can kind of, again, we want to have a good, safe, you know, summer swim, uh, and kind of go from there. So Memorial Day weekend is the opening, there's a lot more smarter people in the communications realm that are pushing all that information out, so they know more than I do. Uh, last thing, Lynn had an emergency, uh, that she had to take care of, uh, she wanted me to just give a quick cops update, you know, while she was on the road. Mayor talked about the raffle, don't have to cover that. Looking for the Second Annual Nipper Memorial Barbecue Cookoff, held October fourteenth and fifteenth at Anse Park. Uh, there will be a band, silent auctions, handgun raffles, Friday night hamburger dinners for sale, Saturday morning breakfast tacos for sale, barbecue plates for lunch. Uh, so a lot more to follow on that. Um, there, she's, they are still looking for businesses to sponsor, uh, reach out to Lynn Mylum, who is the president of the cops organization. What she really wanted me to focus on was that this is a, a Central Texas Barbecue Association sanctioned event. I don't know too much about it, other than the fact that this is one of those events that if you are part of the sanctioned barbecue thingy, shenanigans, shindig, then you have to be at all of these events. So if you want to compete in all of the shindigs, you have to be at all of the shindigs, which Morgan's Point Resort is one of the sanctioned locations at Anse Park.
That means there'll be a lot of people here.
Yeah, so, uh, again, like in, in any good fashion, Morgan's Point Resort, we're always trying to make things bigger and better. And so I know they're trying to, again, kick this one off with a bang, uh, they had a great time. Other than that, that's all I got, I'm out.
That's all I got.
Anybody, Carrie, Keith, anybody, any other questions?
I'll second with Dalton, uh, so with the, uh, Central Texas Barbecue Association, uh, there, they hold four events a year, I believe. And so before you were on, you didn't have to attend all four events, um, to still win, um, through the association, or get, get prizes through the association. They made a rule change, and so with what, well, with what Dalton was saying, if you're gonna be, if you want any kind of prizes or anything from the Central Texas Barbecue Association, um, you have to attend all the events, uh, and so we are sanctioned events, so they have to, so that means events that are big and larger, um, naturally. Either that or they drop out of the association, which I doubt they do.
Thanks, Sarah. Karen, you got anything?
I'm sorry.
I know y'all been busy. Y'all been busy.
We been real busy.
Real busy, yeah.
You had a number, struck your fire.
I don't know, I'm, it's a bad practice, but you're doing good at it.
Yeah, well, we are getting better with everything we do, to be perfectly accurate with this.
Council?
It is hot, to be fair, and it's a unseasonable, epic drought, it will stay live originally, so we're really hammering, focusing on a lot of mitigation work. Y'all probably have a cancer program that makes friends, so you're not losing all of your loved others, you should help, help them through it all, and that part of it's safe. Well, that's a good issue, though, if you're having a time of it.
We appreciate y'all.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
And all the training that you go through.
Thank y'all.
Yeah.
Okay, Donna.
I have the auxiliary port, and they're continuing to work on the welcome bags. They wanted to thank everybody that helped out at the Easter egg hunt, you know, the administration, police, fire, all of the departments. Uh, our fire department, who usually comes in and brings the rabbit, they were actually on a fire call, so imagine that, the fire department. So, um, anyway, and they, they really thanked the police department, kicked in and, and took care of things for us, and it went without a hitch, lots of kids, lots of fun. It's wonderful to all be back again together, you know, as groups. Um, they've set some dates for twenty-three, so you might want to mark your calendars, the twenty-fifth, they're gonna do the cops and robbers, nosy neighbors again on the twenty-fifth. Uh, auxiliary garage sale will take place Friday, the seventeenth, and Saturday, the eighteenth, this year in June. Uh, they're looking forward, Jimbo, to helping out with the, uh, July third celebrations, so call on them if, whatever you need them to do. They're ready and excited to help you out. Uh, their cruise packet is still scheduled for August eighth through the sixteenth. Uh, they had, they found out that the ice machine went out at the fire department, we know our guys out there, and the heat, horrible heat, and the towels on their head, they need their ice. So they reached out to the Adam Street Walmart for a community grant, they were awarded four thousand dollars. So y'all want to let Walmart know how much you appreciate their, their, what they did, and the, and the fire department, I'm sorry.
Who's Walmart was that, do you know?
Yes, it says West, it says Adam Street.
Adams, okay.
Yeah, Adam Street. And, yes, uh-huh, and the, uh, Volunteer Fire Fighters Association helped out with a contribution of five hundred. And they're gonna discuss how they're gonna come up with the eight hundred and eighty-eight, so you know, that might be something you might want to think about. Uh, and then he said, mark your calendars for this coming February in twenty twenty-three, they're bringing back the Valentine's Ball, where if you've never gone, this is a spectacular occasion, great, great date night, it's wonderful fun, honors our fire department. And as always, they appreciate our fire department, we love what we do, and they know they couldn't do it without the support of the citizens in their fire department. And that was from Karen Steigner, the president. And, and also one other announcement I'll make, Landon, with our Dream Team Water Department, got his TCEQ licensed customer service tech. He passed that, that was in the packet. So we always want to acknowledge, uh, those in the staff that go out and get this extra licensing and things, so let them know, we're proud of them.
Okay, thank you, Donna, thanks for that. Now, just going to council comments, do you have anything, you gonna make any other statement personally?
Just thank you all for being here, thank you for sitting through a really long agenda with us and being so sweet and patient.
Bruce?
Um, I'm good, just thanks for showing up and, yeah.
Robbie?
Yeah, thank you all for being here tonight, and I want to, uh, also say congratulations to our new, uh, P and Z, uh, members, and thank you for your service.
Okay, Larry?
Thank you for sticking around.
Sean?
Yeah, it's a long meeting. Thanks for coming.
Dalton, you gonna make your last statement? Uh, thank y'all very much for being here, I'm gonna, I'm thankful for being here, and now I want to ask for a motion to adjourn. And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.